From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, and good morning Kern County and around the world observers. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, August 5, 2025. We'll begin this morning as we always do with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. This morning, we have an incredible presentation for our salute to the flag. We don't get many female veterans, so this is really special, really special. Itzel Vilches is a first-generation Mexican-American, born on the Central Coast.
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, and good morning Kern County and around the world observers. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, August 5, 2025. We'll begin this morning, as we always do, with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. This morning, we have an incredible presentation for our salute to the flag. We don't get many female veterans, so this is really special, really special. Itzel Vilches is a first-generation Mexican-American, born on the Central Coast. She moved to Bakersfield when she was eight and graduated from Golden Valley High School before enlisting in the Navy in 2014. She joined to see the world, ended up right back in the Central Valley, stationed in Lemoore. She was an F-18 avionics technician and plane captain attached to Strike Fighter Squadron, VFA 25. That is so cool. Itzel is a mother to two children. They are the reason she strives to be the best version of herself daily. She moved back to Bakersfield in recent months and is finding more to love about her hometown. She is a disabled veteran and appreciates all the resources and the assistance in her transition back to Bakersfield. Itzel cares deeply and speaks up about mental health and female voices in the military. She is a student attending Bakersfield College, pursuing a degree in kinesiology, and is excited for the road ahead. She is strong in her faith and practices gratitude every single day. Itzel, welcome to the board chambers. Thank you for leading our flag salute today, and thank you so much for your service to this great country.
Thank you for your support, ma'am. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you again for your service. Great example to your two babies. Again, in the Kern County feel-good spirit, we will have our pet of the week. Nick Collett, could you make your way out here and tell us who you brought with you today? Precious baby. Who do you got there, Nick?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have with me Peanut. Peanut is... He's a technical term. The technical term is he's the goodest boy of them all. He's just a good dog, man. He was surrendered by his owner, who could no longer provide care. They were moving into an apartment, and he's six years old. He's potty-trained, gets along with other dogs, and he's just got a lot of character. He's a very sweet dog, and he's available for adoption right now. And all of our adoption fees are waived this month.
Oh, really? And why is that, Nick?
We're participating in the NBC Universal's Clear the Shelters event, which is a month-long adoption program, and all of our pet adoptions are fee-waived adoptions, including Peanut.
Including Peanut, who's I saw in the back. David Couch is having quite the time with Peanut, which is...
He's an older dog.
Yeah, a little bit calmer, huh? An older dog. Kindred spirits, David. I love it. Okay, good luck, Peanut. We hope you find a beautiful home. Again, fees waived. Help us, please, in this effort to give this precious baby a forever home, but also the county. Help us clear our shelters. What a great movement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our consent matters. Agendas are in the back of the room, if you're wishing to follow along. Agenda, the consent matters, begin on page two, and they include items one and two, as well as four and seven. On page three, items eight through 13. On page four, all items listed, 15 to 21. Excuse me. On page five, all items listed, 22 to 28. Is that correct? Okay, that's all our consent matters. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on consent? Consent are matters that are considered by staff and county family to be routine and non-controversial, but sometimes members of the public feel otherwise. And now is the time for you to speak up and let us know how you feel on a matter that was just listed under consent. Okay, seeing no interest in doing so, we turn to the board. Thank you, David. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. This morning, we have the incredible opportunity to hear from a very young person and see that you are really never too young to serve, to love, and to organize in a meaningful way in Kern County. We have a certificate of recognition honoring Marshall Sanchez for his achievement in earning the rank of Eagle Scout, and for his outstanding Eagle Scout project, which we're going to hear about, which significantly enhanced the Department of Human Services Children Visitation Center. And I understand we have... There he is, Lito. Come on down. And it looks like we have the whole troop here, how marvelous. All members of the troop, welcome. Welcome to Kern County. Come on down to the podium. We do not need to vote on this because it is a certificate of recognition and appreciation, and I'm going to come down and join you. I understand we have a video, and that you're going to give us some sense of what it is we're here celebrating, and also an opportunity to honor this young man and these incredible young citizens of Kern County. Lito.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez, good morning, members of the board. I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Marshall Sanchez, who's standing right next to him. Marshall, come on up real quick. Marshall is 17 years old, and I say that to say because if you think about what you were doing at 17, it wasn't what Marshall just did. Let me be clear. So Marshall fundraised for over a year, and he raised $10,500. And what he did with those funds is he renovated our CVC Visitation playground, put in a new basketball court with concrete, decorated it with all the court fixings, hopscotch, got new basketball, soccer balls, renovated our soccer area. There was an old playhouse that kids used to play at. He and his troop mates, 484, renovated that, all really to just make a difference in not only the children that visit DHS, but obviously have that long-lasting effect on our community. So with that, I wanted to thank Marshall, and I appreciate this recognition, obviously. Just to be clear, the Boy Scouts have been around since 1910, and this is Marshall's Eagle Scout project. That's how he achieved his rank. And of the million people that have joined the Boy Scout over the years, only 4% actually earned that rank. So credit to Marshall for that. Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to kind of conclude. I'll be brief in my comments, and I'll turn it over to Marshall to say a few things after I show a video as well. That compassion and action are not defined by age and title, but by heart and initiative, and that's exactly the example that Marshall did today. So thank you, Marshall, for that. I'd like to show a video of Marshall's accomplishments. I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Marshall's family, who's here with him today, as Iliana, his mother, Marshall, Axel, and Lindsay, Marshall's sister. And now I'd like to turn it over to Roger Smith, who's Marshall's current Scout Master, for a few words.
Thank you, everyone. As Marshall Scout Master, I think it's my job to guide Marshall in leadership, and Marshall is a perfect example of what we expect from a scout, showing leadership and dedication to our program in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Thank you.
Now, I'll turn it over to Marshall.
I thank you all. It's a pleasure for this opportunity to be able to speak here and be recognized here. And this project meant a lot, just not for me, but I hope for the many children to come for years and years, be playing on the new structures we built. And that was the main goal of this project, just to touch many lives and then hopefully touch many more for the future. Thank you.
Marshall, you are a fine, young American, and I can only imagine what you're going to do as you continue to grow, in particular when you have these kind of adults in your life. This certificate of recognition obviously is to you for your incredible motivation and ability to demonstrate core and critical American virtues. But it is these incredible adults around you that have guided you also, which is your family, as well as your leader here. Thank you so much for what you do, sir. Thank you. This is a certificate of recognition to you, Marshall, commemorating the achievement of Eagle Scout. 4%, I didn't know that. My goodness. Earning you an honorable distinction for the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 484, and for your outstanding Eagle Scout project, which significantly enhanced the Department of Human Services Children Visitation Center, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to all of us here in Kern County. It's presented to you today, Marshall.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. A fine, young man you are. Thank you, colleagues. We're going to get a picture? Okay, let's look this way. Come on over. Outstanding job to your family. Absolutely precious.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. That was really, really wonderful and special. We're going to move now to public presentations. This portion of the agenda is set aside for members of the public to address this board on matters that are within our jurisdiction, that are within our influence, but not on today's specific agenda. Based on your comments, they may end up on a future agenda. We may send you to staff. We may find other ways to resolve your concerns, but certainly, we are here to listen to you and respond to you. Public presentations, we do ask that you please recognize we have a two-minute time slot that we graciously ask you to please observe, as we have many, many important items and a lot of business to conduct today for the county. So, welcome. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Moses Adams.
Moses, good morning.
I just have a big problem for a lot of years, and I'm making copies to give the supervisors a copy.
Okay.
Took some pictures. I live in a flooded area, and I've been fighting this for years and years. As a matter of fact, ma'am, you are in my district, or I'm on your district.
Where do you live, sir?
It's on that paperwork right there.
La France Drive?
Nope. Across the street is Baldwin and La France. And those pictures, it's got the address and the map of where it's located at. I want some of these supervisors to look at it, too, see if I'm wrong or right.
Okay.
I've been fighting this county for I don't know how many years, and they just keep sending trucks and people over there to check on a flooded area and stuff like, when it can be fixed. It's got five, six-inch drains, okay? I found out quite a few years ago that the main drain is only 14 inches, and you've got 30 inches of water going into 14, it don't handle it. That's the reason it gets flooded all the time. And I've been finding the county employees up at the county building, see if we could have it repaired.
Okay.
Or fixed.
Moses, can I ask you, is my chief of staff here, Christian Romo, I know you were out in the foyer. Moses, if you would have a seat here, I'm going to have my staff come over to you and meet with you.
Well, ma'am, I left you pictures in your office at Bank of America a long time ago. Never heard nothing from you.
Okay, sir, I've never had an office at Bank of America. I think you may be confusing me with somebody else.
Well, I don't know. It used to be. Before the pandemic started, your secretary took a bunch of pictures, these pictures that I'm giving you, to give it to you, and I haven't heard from you, never.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
So that's all I'm... I want the board of directors to see these pictures.
Okay.
See if I'm right or wrong.
Okay, you're not wrong.
The last time I talked to the county employees at the county building, they said that it costs too much to repair it. But all these years, they've been sending trucks, tankers, to go pump the water out and all that stuff. I don't think they're saving anything.
Okay, Moses, I'm sorry you've had this experience.
I call it job security, and the guy knows it at the county building, because I told him that.
Okay, Moses, I will.
That's all I got to say.
Okay.
I just need somebody to fix the problem.
Moses, don't do...
Oh, and the other thing, they said they couldn't put another line, a drain line. I said, well, you've got a real good drain system on Ming Avenue, just down the street. You don't have to dig out the old line if you don't want to. You can go over there and tap into that. That's got about a five-foot wide drain, maybe six, eight inches high. That handles all the water. What can't you... Well, we can't hook up because that's a county in the city. Well, what's the difference? It all goes into the same canal.
Nobody wants to hear that. I know. That's so frustrating. Okay, Moses, my chief is here. I'm going to have him meet with you, and we're going to, you know, get started. We don't need to fight. You've been fighting the county, and I'm sorry that you have felt that way and had that experience.
Well, not only the county, ma'am. Like I said, I left you a bunch of copies in your office when you used to be on the Bank of America.
Okay, sir.
And I'm just tired of fighting these people, and they don't do nothing about it.
Okay. My chief is here to meet with you, and we're going to get the ball rolling again, okay? Moses, thank you for being here. Thank you for the pictures. They're very illustrative.
I'm sorry I had to drop the bomb on you, because you represent my area.
I understand. You should never apologize for that, sir.
Well...
Thank you. We're going to look into this very closely.
I apologize to everybody, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Moses. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
Okay. Morning, Dennis.
Dennis McLean. Morning, Madam Chair, supervisors, and staff. Concerned citizens have requested several times that Kern County elections submit voter roll registrations to Homeland Security for cross-referencing citizenship, as it is illegal for non-citizens to vote and constitutes fraud in our elections. We have also asked for proactive measures to avoid litigation, cost, and any problems from inaction for our county. We continue to seek transparency, accuracy, and best practices. The Department of Justice has now asked several large California counties to provide detailed personal information of non-citizens who got on the state voter rolls, and also has asked Alaska, Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, Minnesota, Nevada, New Hampshire, New York, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Wisconsin, to provide wide swaths of information about voters and election practices. The Justice Department sent letters to local election officials in Los Angeles, San Francisco, and San Diego on July 9th of this year. The request asked the officials to provide the total number of non-citizens who had their voter registrations canceled since 2020, as well as a copy of their voter registration records, voting history, date of birth, driver's license numbers, and the last four digits of their social security number. The department sent a similar request to Orange County last month, and then sued the county after officials redacted some information. Thank you. Mr. Ron Barger will be up next.
Thank you, Dennis. Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I'm Ron Barger. I'm going to continue. Federal law requires states to regularly check their rolls for people who are ineligible because they have moved or died, with safeguards in place to ensure that the eligible voters are not erroneously moved. While election officials turned over the names and the dates and the birth of those who registered, they redacted their social security and driver's license numbers citing state privacy laws. When Orange County officials offered to work on a confidentiality agreement under which they could provide the records, the Justice Department responded by suing the county for the records. The Justice Department announced June 25, 2025, that it has filed a lawsuit against Robert Page, the Orange County Register of Voters in Orange County, California, for refusing to provide the Justice Department with records pertaining to the removal of non-citizens from its voter registration list, and for failing to maintain an accurate voter list in violation of Help America Vote Act, HAVA. Voting by non-citizens is a federal crime, and states and counties that refuse to disclose all requested voter information are in violation of well-established federal election laws. State's Assistant Attorney General Harmick Dillon of the Justice Department Civil Rights Division. I turn this over to Glenn Clayton.
Thank you. Good morning, Glenn.
Good morning. Glenn Clayton, CLAYTON, board, good morning, and our staff. Thank you very much. As Ron was saying, Assistant Attorney General Harmick K. Delhilon of the Justice Department Civil Rights Division said this, and I quote, "Removal of non-citizens from the state voter rolls is critical to ensuring that the state's voter rolls are accurate and that elections in California are conducted without fraudulent voting. The Department of Justice will hold jurisdictions that refuse to comply with federal voting laws accountable." The Justice Department pointed out two federal laws, the National Voter Registration Act, NVRA, and the Help America Vote Act, the HAVA, that set up requirements as to how the states must maintain their voter rolls. The Justice Department called a provision of the NVRA that requires states to come up with a general program for removing voters from the rolls because they have either died or moved. They also cited a provision of HAVA that requires states to have a system for removing ineligible voters from the rolls and not to accept a federal voter registration application unless the voters provide a driver's license number or the four digits of their social security number. Thank you very much, and I turn this over to Andy Hensel, my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Good morning.
Good morning, board and staff. It's nice to have everyone present this morning. Andy Hensel, H-E-N-S-E-L. The Civil Rights Division Voting Section enforces the civil provisions of the federal statutes that protect the integrity of the vote, including the Voting Rights Act, the Help America Vote Act, and the Uniformed and Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act. Concerned citizens request that Kern... The Kern County Board of Supervisors make inquiries with Amy Espinoza, the Register of Voters, as to whether she sent voter roll registrations to Homeland Security for cross-referencing, and whether the Secretary of State has addressed the current lawsuit with her office. The key areas to address are, number one, the number of voter registration records removed in Kern County that did not satisfy the citizenship requirements since 2020, and the ability to produce records reflecting each cancellation. Number two, the lawsuit seeks the names of the officials responsible for the list maintenance. Number three, the past EVAS report on November 22, 2024, was made without noting whether the removals were for duplicate registrations, death, or moving out of the county. On a personal note, I went to the election office about two weeks ago to exercise my right as a qualified citizen of Kern County, and I was there to get a copy of the voter rolls. And the recipients of this data do have to understand the importance of guarding the privacy of hundreds of thousands of registrants, and I do understand that. And I've also read the part of the election code that explains the serious penalties for violating that trust, and yet, I was refused. I was not allowed to receive a list of the canceled voters. And I think Couch can relate to me on that. Any questions?
Will you give an explanation as to...
Yes, yes, confidentiality. So I'm not sure if that means the confidentiality of the voters or of the election department. I don't know.
Okay. So the list, they said, will never be available to you then, based on... Okay. So the list, they said, will never be available to you then, based on confidentiality grounds?
Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Board.
Morning, Jess.
We've been coming here for quite some time. And just for clarity's sake, my appreciation goes way beyond my expression of gratitude for y'all. It's just, we're down to business and I'm brass tacks type guy.
I understand.
Over the past three years, concerned, oh, Jeff Sanders.
Thanks, Jess.
Over the past three years, concerned citizens have been presenting evidence and problems of failed election security and transparency and the voter rolls maintenance. The voice of the, we, the people successfully prompted the ROV to remove 64,328 ineligible voters from Kern County voter rolls. And if somebody wanted to do the math of the mailing and the cost of ballots, that's quite a sum.
Yeah, you're right.
But there is more to be done. VBMs are still being mailed to wrong addresses. Many of those ballots are sent to addresses of people that not only don't live there, don't live in the county, don't live in the state, or don't live at all. So not so long ago, I turned over 40 to 50 VBMs to the Special Assistance for the DA for voter integrity. Now, 450 VBMs that were sent out to people that didn't exist at that address or exist at all, doesn't sound like a lot, but.
That's a lot.
Well, I wasn't canvassing for them. They were people like somebody that heard us here or somebody that heard us downtown volunteered those. So they were ballots that were handed to me because they were just concerned about our integrity. I appreciate your efforts in helping us clear this up.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you very much. Morning, Mr. Shin.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the Board of Supervisors. God bless America. I am Charles Shin. I am a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. Right here, I have something that I will talk about in just a moment. Concerned Citizens has been working on election integrity issues for some time. I will do an overview. Our background. Kern citizens of all stripes got engaged right after the COVID lockdown. Notice government got way too big. And some citizens have been doing digital canvassing, which is where we look for missing information on the voter rolls. If you're to fill out a credit card application and you left some of the information that we see on the voter rolls out, you would not be able to get the credit card or to apply for a loan or to purchase a house. We also found incorrect data. Number two, Concerned Citizens has completed a large-scale walking canvas. We had potentially 1,200-plus folks to canvass on the MCOA, National Change of Address, who, when you fill that form out, you're telling the post office and the ROV, hey, I'm moving out of, you know, the county or I'm moving out of the state. The particular canvas we did was out of state only. So we wanted to find folks that weren't even in the state of California. We got over 322 declarations from citizens living in those homes that stated, no, that person that you canvassed for no longer lives here. We're doing, our third tranche here is we're doing postal canvassing now. Postcards. What we found with this is, yes, indeed. These postcards going out, folks are saying, hey, Joe Schmuckatelli doesn't live here anymore and he lives in another state. Some say, hey, this person passed away. So we have a lot of evidence. Concerned citizens would like the ROV to contact Homeland Security, to work with Homeland Security to make sure that folks that shouldn't be on the voter rolls are removed. We would also like to ask our two favorite supervisors if they could, with the last four months of this, of this month, put the dates of our committee meetings on the website so that we have time to plan and we know what the dates are and our friends that attend the meetings with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Always good to hear from you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm packing today.
Okay.
I have more over there. If you'd like to see them afterwards.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I, before you get started, Janine, I want to refer something to the assessor or the auditor controller's office, the Register of Voters. My understanding is you can get a copy of the voter roll. You may have to pay for it. So there is no confidentiality when you are. Says it's on. I can talk louder. Okay. So it's my understanding, it's, everybody here knows you can go in and buy the voter roll. Is it true that you cannot get a list of people that have been removed? So I just want to refer that to the auditor controller and get an answer for that.
Supervisor Couch, the Chair will convey that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am also aware that you can buy the voter roll. And we've done it in campaigns past. It's not the most efficient way to campaign, frankly, because it's a large list and it's a big compilation. But I'm aware of that as well. So thank you for your attention. Good morning, Janine. Nice to see you.
Good morning. Respect. Janine Adams to Hatch P. Last time I was here, I mentioned a few books. I thought I would bring a few with me. Think for a Change, Robert C. Maxwell. The Constitution of the United States. 1984, the 75th anniversary.
75th.
Dear Chairman. Boardroom Battles and the Rise of the Shareholder Activism. Regarding the Bakersfield Californian, July 17th, '25. To Home Proxy Fight. Regarding, you guessed it, Transparency. By John Cox. There's another reference for you. But the one that is really the best is this one right here. Haven't mentioned it yet. The Geography of Hope. Real-life stories of optimism, mapping a better world. I got this because I worked at the assessor's office and we have a mapping department. But I randomly opened it up and guess whose face came up at me? Manpreet Kar. Read it. Second chapter. Has to do with Bakersfield's change in their lines for voting. Okay. That doesn't leave me very much time to go through this that I've already handed out. This is, the first page is, as it says, contents. It's a draft. It's a white paper from SEIU 521. It is fully annotated. I cannot go through all the annotations. I only have one person. They have six. Okay.
They have more than six.
I got more than one, girl. Okay. But this has to do with the auditor controller's office and I will be back at 2:00 to discuss that more with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. That's quite a collection you have there. Supervisor Couch.
Real quick, Janine, this is, here's my question. I skimmed this very quickly when you gave it to me. The second section of this says findings.
Yes.
Which is kind of a, kind of a legal term. So.
It is.
Who made these findings? That's the question.
Why don't you ask for a lobby visit from SEIU 521? I am not, I don't work for SEIU. Thank you very much. I cannot answer.
Well, you passed it out. I'm just asking about the paper that you gave us.
It is a draft.
That's okay.
I'm going to have SEIU send you the final approved copy so that you can link to all of the various links that are there.
This doesn't change my question, but go ahead.
I'm just telling you what I'm going to send you, sir. Give me your question again.
I'm curious, who made the findings? That's all.
My understanding is the findings of the Kern County Auditor Controller's Office.
So this came from Amy Espinoza?
No. Well, I think these findings were made before Amy Espinoza was elected.
So this came from Mary Bedard?
Correct. My understanding.
The findings came from Mary Bedard?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine, and thank you for answering Supervisor Couch's questions. Other members of the public who would like to please come forward and share with us your thoughts or ideas on matters not on today's agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. Good morning, ma'am.
Hi. Good morning, Mrs. C.C. Press. My name is Thomasina Rivers. I'm here to notify the Board and Kern County that I'm going to be filing a lawsuit against the county based off the actions of the Welfare Department due to noncompliance of a lawful order that was made in 2018 after they stopped my Cal Works wrongfully. They withheld subjective evidence that was in my favor and not only did the judge rule in my favor without a hearing of both parties, it was a ruling in my favor to be seen in a separate household. First thing they did is Ms. Vernique Hayes at the Appeals Unit decided to send an email to Chief Judge Romero, I believe, and asked him to put a hold on a final decision, which is illegal against the law. He couldn't do it, so he told her no. So from that point on, when I was supposed to get back pay, they created a fake child support sanction. They stopped my benefits in August, so the letters from child support would come straight to me. But where it went to is not to them and not to me. They made a fake sanction. The judge ordered them to bring it up. They could not produce it. So then, after that, the judge ruled in my favor and that did that part. Then the back pay, they decided to take out money from, from the back pay because of the child sanction. Then they inverted my son's father's income tax and he was not responsible for the Cal Works. We already had a child support case. So from that point on, there was a card by Anna, I'm not sure if it was a detective or so. I went into an office. There was a police officer and an employee from the Welfare Department about to arrest me, put me in prison for child support. No, 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 for Cal Works, what do you call it? Violating Cal Works or fraud. Yeah, there you go, frauding Cal Works. I'll, that hurt, but I'll be okay. Okay, so I was in an office. They're about to take me in prison after the judge ruled in my favor. Then they pulled out something from Facebook and said whatever they were going to say. And I'm saying, dude, I'm not married to this guy. I'm not even in a relationship anymore with this guy. So from that point on, they were going to take my kids to CPS. You're talking about major damage, okay? Then let's start from there. Because they could not get away with it by making a hold or the sanction or the inverting or trying to take me to prison, they decided to stop my Cal fresh. During the time that I had the fully favorable decision to see me in a separate household, they decided, oh, well, I can't get away with it. We're going to stop her food stamps. They've done this from 2015 all the way to 2025. And if they want, I'm filing this lawsuit. Yes, equitable tolling does apply because it is still ongoing noncompliance. So I'm here to let everyone know here that I'm going to be filing a federal lawsuit and also add in that lawsuit that the Welfare Department and Social Security were coercing and I have evidentiary proof. I signed a paper for them to get the, you know, you sign so they can look up information on you and stuff like that at the same time.
Ma'am, I'm, you got to wrap up your comments. We're over a minute over.
Oh, we are?
Yes.
Well, please do forgive me, but I am here just to notify everyone so that when I go to file the lawsuit, I have exhausted everything. So I hope you guys have a wonderful evening and.
I'm sorry for all your troubles, ma'am. I really am.
It's good. It's going to pan out.
Sounds like a nightmare. I'm sorry. Okay, any other members of the public who would like to come down and speak to this board about matters that you're concerned about that are within our jurisdiction but not on today's specific agenda? Good morning, sir. And welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're good. All right.
Kern County Board of Supervisors, I am Cordero of the Family of Martin, a veteran of the armed forces who served his country with humility by jumping out of airplanes, rappelling down helicopters, and navigating the deserts during sandstorms. Before that, I worked in an ice cream shop for about $6.25 an hour. Before that, I tolled for my wages for the day with hard labor. So hear and understand that me and humility know each other very well. I went not one, not two, but three decades of my life never being treated the way I was treated in Kern County. I was falsely accused, maliciously persecuted, physically assaulted, sexually assaulted by state actors within Kern County. I presented a claim and it was rejected by county counsel. I paid a visit to Ms. Graham and it appears that she understands because rejection is not denial. I emailed all of you and it seems to me that you perceive your position meridional response. The City of McFarland, within the County of Kern, must pay damages from its coffers. And after it has now paid what it owes, it must be disincorporated. I am an orphan and by right, a son of God. And my Father decreed, touch not my anointed and do my prophets no harm. I was harmed. Soon as I was touched, judgment was immediately sentenced and decreed in the spirit realm. Judgment will come to pass. It's not a matter of if, but of when. The only thing you can do now to reclaim your honor, especially you, David Couch, because now you're on your phone and not even listening. Yes, you could pay attention for two minutes. Only thing you can do, we're going over time by about 10 seconds, to reclaim your honor is do as I demand and that is disincorporate the City of McFarland. There's already a federal case in federal court for it. I'm a very articulated young man and I do stand up for what is right, no matter the cost. This concludes my declaration.
Thank you, sir. I am sorry for your troubles in Kern County. Are there any other members of the public who would like to come forward during our public presentations, period of this morning's agenda? Okay, seeing no other interest, we're going to move on to board member announcements or reports, colleagues, anything? Supervisor Flores? No, okay. I, go ahead.
I wasn't going to speak, but on that subject, disincorporation is a very technical legal issue that involves LAFCO, the Local Agency for Information Commission. Supervisor Dave Couch knows. It's nothing that our board can, has the power to disincorporate a city, but. I wasn't going to speak, but just plain.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. I have an announcement to make as well. Many of you know my staff very well and a member of my staff, Andreas Calvio, will be leaving my office this week. This is his last week. He is returning to school full-time, which is a decision I completely and entirely support. The completion of his education is absolutely paramount and critical. But he will be leaving my office and I wanted to share with you just a little bit of information about him in honor of his service to Kern County, which has been absolutely stellar. It's a bittersweet morning for D-5 team. Today is our last board session for our beloved field representative, Andreas Calvio. After serving in our office since 2023, Andreas has decided to focus on finishing his degree in business and will be leaving our office at the end of the week. Andreas is proud to be born and raised in the city of Shafter. It was there that he became an unexpected community activist assisting with multiple organizations in North Kern, including work and his local church, which he has been dedicated to since the age of nine. Andreas first started with our team during the 2022 campaign. Later came into his role as intern in our office. Within a few months, he proved himself to be valued member of the team, showed up with the utmost dedication in serving our constituents. It is because of this, he eventually moved up his ranks to become a full-time, permanent field rep. I would like to thank Andreas for his years of service to our community. His kind-hearted, caring, service-oriented spirit will be missed every day in our office. But I hope he knows that D-5 will always be eternally grateful and will always be home to Andreas Calvio. We thank you for your service to this county and we wish you the absolute best in your pursuit of a business degree and your. and your endless personal success of which we have a great hope for. Thank you for your service to this community and to District 5. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, seeing no other board member announcements or reports, we're going to continue with the agenda this morning, item number 14, under the County Administrative Office. It's a presentation of My Kern Application, a digital transparency and accessibility tool for county residents to engage with county government in real time and report non-emergency issues to us so that we can quickly respond and be more active and more engaged with the needs and interests and opinions of the members of this community. So I understand Erin will be making this presentation this morning. Excellent. Thank you so much. I see you're well positioned. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Erin Briscoe Clark, and I serve as the Chief Communications Officer for the County of Kern. This morning, I'll be providing an update on My Kern app at the referral of Supervisor Parlier during the January 7th meeting. And the delay of bringing this item forward was due to my predecessor vacating this position and then the subsequent recruitment to fill this position. So with that, I'd like to walk you through the status of My Kern and give you a look at our vision moving forward. So I'm gonna begin with an overview of My Kern application. It's a free mobile app, countywide communications rolled out in May of 2024, to give residents a centralized and accessible way to engage with county government and report non-emergency issues within their communities. My Kern provides residents with an elevated level of service and strengthens the connection to local government. And not only that, but it helps streamline resident reports more effectively. It also allows our team to communicate with the reporting party and keep them updated on their request every step of the way until the issue is resolved. How to download My Kern? You can download it. It's an app for free on the Apple App Store or Google Play. If you do not have a smartphone, you can visit our county website, kerncounty.com. And on the homepage, under Community, you'll see on the drop-down list, you'll see My Kern. And you can access the embedded app that way to report an issue with Public Works or our Parks and Recs Department, which are utilizing the app for service requests intake. We've also created a QR code that takes you directly to the App Store or the Google Play Store. Taking a look at how we've utilized that app, or excuse me, the QR code, each one of our county parks features signage with that QR code that links directly to the My Kern app, making it easy for residents to download the app and alert us to concerns in real time. The addition of these signs provide our community with better accessibility to report issues that they see at our parks as they see it, and it's without having to search for a phone number on our website or try to hunt down that phone number. Residents can also report various other issues they see in their community through the Public Works Department. These issues include abandoned vehicles, catch basins and drainage sumps, concrete repairs, draining issues, encampments, guardrails, handicap parking, illegal dumping, landscaping, pavement markings or striping, potholes, road signs, street sweeping, street lights, traffic signals, and other issues. Users can also attach a photo or photos of the issue they wish to report. And the more information we have, the better it is, because this allows our staff to see what's wrong before arriving on site, and it ensures accuracy of the tagged location. It's also useful for case tracking and status updates. A key feature that's been added following the app launch in 2024 is GIS mapping. Now, this is a feature that's used to associate a specific location and supervisor district with a service request, enabling a more efficient and accurate response from our staff. So how it works is when a resident uses My Kern to report an issue, they'll be asked to enter an issue location or manually drop a PIN. If the address is not within a county district, they will receive a message that lets them know that the address is not within a county boundary. So why is GIS mapping important? It ensures the issue is routed to the correct department. Designated users within Public Works or Parks and Recreation can see the exact location on a map, expediting a response time. And it also reduces confusion between the reporting party and responding department by eliminating unclear or missing location data. Reporting an issue is easy. The user can start the request from the homepage of the app, find the request type, enter a photo if applicable, select the location, and then the map will automatically go to your current location. But you can enter an address or move the map around to drop the location marker. And then provide a detailed description so we can deploy the right team and list your contact information so we can keep you informed on the status of your request. And finally, submit the request, and a staff member will assign you a ticket number, and that will keep you up to date every step of the way. My Kern also serves as a one-stop convenient way for residents to stay connected to the county and its departments. Through the app, users can view job opportunities, pay property taxes, check road closures, report graffiti, adopt an animal, find out more about our budget, and a whole lot more. There's also a feature to receive push alerts, which allows users to receive timely updates and important news as it happens. So taking a look at how the app is being used, I'm gonna review some data on the user activity and engagement. From August of 2024 through July of 2025, a total of 4,682 requests were submitted through the app. Of those 41 requests were reports of issues at our parks, while Public Works received 4,641 requests. You may notice that Public Works shows a significant bulk of the reports, and that's because the department is utilizing the app internally. So meaning if someone calls with an issue to report, that staff member will go into the app and report it that way. So that's how they're tracking it. And in addition, Public Works staff is encouraged to download the app and use the app when they're out and about working. If they come across something, if they're headed to a job and they see a pothole or see another issue, that they can go on the app and report it as well. This next slide breaks down the types of issues reported between the same period. The top three issues: potholes with 1,199 reports, illegal dumping, 979 reports, and encampments, 964 reports. And this slide looks at how many requests were submitted within each supervisor district between August of 2024 through July of 2025. So what's next for My Kern? Our goal is to elevate utilization of the app through strategic campaigns, through our social media platforms, as well as our bi-weekly video around Kern County, and continue to educate our public on how to download the app and its accessibility through printed materials. And we want to send the message to our public that using My Kern isn't just about reporting a problem. It's taking pride in our community. Our key message: Your voice, your community, your app. We're also focusing on educating the public about the QR codes located on our park signage to help keep our parks beautiful, clean, and safe for everyone to enjoy and thrive. We just had the Virginia Avenue Park reopening, and that's a message at these park reopenings, revitalization projects that we are really pushing with our community that... You see the sign right here. This is a way, when you're here walking and playing with your family or enjoying the park, utilize that QR code to report any issues that you may see. And then internally, we're going to be encouraging our employees and more employees to use the app as a tool. So when they're out in our community, if they see an issue, to report it, to expedite response times. Plus, we'll be in communication with other county departments who may be interested in utilizing other My Kern functions, whether that be push alerts, if they have a press release or something they want to push out on the app to let countywide communications know, so we could help them with that. And additionally, over the past few months, we've been providing the board with regular updates by each district to identify the issues within the district and the problems to solve, and we'll continue to provide those updates. Well, that concludes my presentation, and I appreciate this opportunity to highlight My Kern. I'm available for any questions.
Erin, thank you. I was just so, so thrilled when we celebrated our Virginia Park upgrades last week to see that on the physical sign at the park is the QR code. I mean, this is a massive leap forward in the use of technology and the ability to respond in real time to the needs of our public spaces, places where our families, our children should come and feel welcome and really drive activity there that is good for our children, both in their physical activity, for their health, but in the sense of communal activity that needs to take place in our parks. So I was just so thrilled to see that. That is so cutting-edge, and it is accessible and easy. We know just about everybody has a phone, strikingly, and that is just, it's right there. To your point earlier, you don't have to Google around numbers, get the wrong number, get sent here, get sent there. No, this is city. No, this is county. That's maddening for constituents, right? They want to be able to report to their government something they see that they'd like to see action taken on. And you're bringing that right there to the most basic, common space that we have here in Kern County, which is our park. So I was just so, so thrilled to see that. I'm so grateful for that. Thank you for leading the charge and for doing so much to keep the community connected. I know how important this is to Supervisor Parlier, who has asked for these kind of reports to understand usage and how we can improve this service to the community. And I see he has punched in because he's very opinionated, as he should be. Supervisor Parlier, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Erin, that is a wonderful update. Thank you so much. I love the community connectivity that the county's utilizing and the tracking mechanism, too. The gentleman that was here today with the flooding issues, one of the major problems I hear when I'm out in the communities is, you know, what's happening with, you know, what I reported. And with My Kern app, it allows that feedback as it's in process, which is a good thing. When I'm out, again, in various communities, I keep pushing, my staff is pushing My Kern app. I know it's such a wonderful tool for all of us. And as we come back next year, I'm sure that those statistics, and their good statistics, will keep ticking up as more and more people utilizes that tool. And I just want to thank you again, and I make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Also, Erin, I really appreciate during your remarks at the park, your promotion and pushing of the Adopt a Park program. Because just like we see with our furry friends, right? The community has really got to do its part in the maintenance of our public spaces. We do not have enough officers. We do not have enough... There will never be enough public dollars to address everything the community would like to see. That's just the reality, and it's true anywhere. But certainly when we have these public-private partnerships where the community knows how to be engaged, the county provides all the resources, trash bags, gloves, anything that is needed, so the community doesn't have to spend money but come and volunteer and spend some of their, you know, elbow grease out in the community, helping us keep these spaces clean, keeping an eye on them, driving riffraff out of the parks so that our kids and families feel safe and welcome in those spaces. So I know we're still essentially in the infancy of that program, but we gotta get it out. We gotta keep talking about it so that the community is aware that that tool is there and that they can be empowered to, you know, partake in the maintenance of these spaces and be part of the county family, frankly, be an extension of the county family in maintaining our public spaces. It's very exciting. It's practical. It's cutting-edge. It's really cool. I appreciate that you continue to emphasize that. Supervisor Flores, you're up.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Thank you, and I want to thank Supervisor Parlier for making this referral. I appreciate the update, and thank you, Ms. Briscoe, for your work on this. And the metrics are very interesting to see that the top three issues are roads, illegal dumping, and encampments. And I would say that illegal dumping and encampments, there's probably some crossover between the two. So we're gonna continue to focus on that. But this is really powerful tool, so I look forward to the campaign. And also, code enforcement in the County of Kern is report-driven. It's not a proactive approach for the most part. So I know we have limited staffing, limited field reps, limited code. But this really unleashes the power of 800,000 people in the County of Kern to take control, to use technology and serve as our eyes and ears. And so these are gonna grow. I'm encouraged by the numbers. So the bigger the numbers, isn't a bad thing. The bigger the numbers means issues are being tackled, things are being solved, things are being improved. So kudos to you, kudos to staff, and just want to say thank you.
Excellent point, Supervisor Flores. And there's so... Cost savings in this is profound, cutting out so much of the middle process that frankly usually frustrates members of the public and makes them believe their government is not responsive, what we really want to be, I promise you. And this is a tool to continue to drive that home to the community, which is just so, so exciting. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Flores, for bringing that up about code enforcement. I think that's gonna be another really important part of this, but I just wanted to commend staff on their efforts on this. This is a really great example of how we can better serve our customer, which is the public of Kern County, which I think really needs to be our overarching focus of what we do here. And it's really encouraging to see this type of innovation. It's really encouraging to see Public Works and other departments get on board and start utilizing this tool and figure out ways that we can just be more efficient in serving the public. So kudos to you guys.
Thank you. It is innovation, Supervisor Peters. It's also accountability, right, to our public coffers. This is the people's government. It's their money, their tax dollars. More responsive we are, just the better we function and the better the public feels about who we are and what we're doing. So this is very cool. Thank you so much again. You're doing an excellent job, Erin, in this role. I appreciate your professionalism. You're an exceptional county family member. Thank you for all that you do. Supervisor Couch.
I agree, and I second the motion.
Excellent. And are there any members of the public who would... We have a motion in a second, but before we go to a vote, ask members of the public, shockingly, I see Janine Adams here.
Shocking, Janine Adams to Tehachapi hat.
Good to see you. Always good to see you.
Amazing that I happened to bring this book, The Geography of Hope: Real-Life Stories of Optimistic Mapping. That's GIS, folks, For a Better World. The Assessors' Office maintains a lot of that through their mapping department, as you know. They've had a lot of turnover recently. It's a very hard position to fill, quite frankly. And they're gonna have all new people. And in Tehachapi, where I live, there's, it's not quite straight. Like, people use the county map system, GIS, to find you, like fire protection. Well, if there's a fire, we can pretty much see where it is. But what if it's a sheriff's office, then they can't find you because the GIS is... So I would suggest, just as a thought, that certainly pass this. This is amazing, okay? But, you know, talk to the people over in mapping about what's going on in Tehachapi as far as GIS.
Thank you, Janine. Any other members of the public want to weigh in on My Kern app? We go out to the community, and we provide little flyers that have the QR code on it. It feels like one of the most exciting things I've ever done for the community to say, "Your voice matters. Here's a real-time way to have your voice and your concerns be heard by this body and by this county." So, you know, really, really good stuff. Thank you. Erin, we have a motion in a second. Seeing no other public comment, I ask my colleagues to cast your vote, please.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Okay. We have a relatively light morning. This is the end of our morning agenda. We will be back at 2:00 PM for our afternoon session. We'll adjourn now to close session. Thank you. Supervisor Couch, motion to adjourn? Thank you.